Good evening and welcome to the June 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The Board did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting for personnel matter. This is our first meeting in 15 months where we, not only all the commissioners here live, but we also have an audience. Welcome back. It's great to see everyone. It's also an indication of all the progress that has been made with the vaccines. And I will urge anyone who hasn't yet gotten a vaccine to please, there's lots of places to get them, they're free, and they'll help prevent this from occurring again. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel is absent. Mr. McCabe?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Chief Ayala, would you lead the pledge?
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
I know we're back.
All right, we'll start off with the Our Citizens Forum, Mr. Lou DeVeckis.
Who is not here.
Doesn't appear to be here at the moment, Michelle Alvery from our Parks Board.
Michelle Alvery, 134 Hastings Avenue, Haverford Town. And I am here as the chairman of the Parks Board, as well as an individual resident, to thank you all for considering the renaming of the Haverford Community Park as the Andy Lewis Community Park. As we all know how invaluable Andy was to the amount of land we have for open space and recreation up in the Haverford Reserve. So I'd just like to thank you all for giving that consideration on behalf of the Parks Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And thank the Park Board. We really appreciate it.
Are there any other residents who want to speak on agenda items? Agenda items only at this point? Okay, our first item of business is the renaming of the Haverford Reserve Community Park.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to rename the Haverford Reserve Community Park to the Andy Lewis Community Park.
Second.
Second by Commissioner D'Amelio. Any comments? I think we all spoke, yes. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel, absent. Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Proud to vote yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Thank you all. I believe the Parks Board has plans for, in the fall, an official naming. So we'll get that information out as it becomes available. Proclamations, Juneteenth, National Freedom Day.
Go get them, Connor. Go get them.
Friend of mine. So I'm going to read this proclamation out. And about two years ago, I didn't ever think I would have the guts to do this. So I'll do it now. But whereas for 159 years, Juneteenth or National Freedom Day continues to be the most recognized African-American holiday of ors or urbans in the United States, or also known as Emancipation Day. Emancipation celebrates Free Freedom Day, Juneteenth, in the Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth or National Freedom Day commemorates the survival due to the God-given strength and determination of or of African-Americans who were brought to this country stacked in the bottom of slave ships in a month-long journey across the Atlantic Ocean known as the Mid-Middle Passage. And approximately 11 and 1/2 million Africans and Americans survived the voyage to the New World. The number that died is likely greater only to be subjected to whippings, castration, branding, rape, tearing apart of families, and forced to submit to slavery for more than 200 years after arrival in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day freedom was proclaimed to all slaves in and of the South by Union General Granger on June 19, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, more than two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Lincoln, for the first time in over 130 years of the annual celebration, Juneteenth has finally been officially recognized as Juneteenth or Independence Day in America by the President and Congress of the United States. And whereas the reality is particularly underscored by the fact that it was in the first session of the 105th Congress, the bipartisan cooperation, which we need a lot of these days, of the former Congressman Barbara Rose Collins, former Senator Carol Mosley Braun, or Congressman Jay Z Watts, former House Speaker Newt Gingrich, Senate Majority Leader Trent Lott, and Senate Minority Leader Tom Daschle, that the Senate Joint Resoluterion 56 were successfully shared effort through both Houses of Congress in a successful effort to recognize Juneteenth as the Independence Day observance of Africans of African descent in 1997. And whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, and religions, and countries of origin share in the common love of respect for freedom, as well as the determination to protect their right to freedom through democratic institutions by which the tenants of freedom are guaranteed and protected by the 19th of June or Juneteenth in the Independence Day, along with July 4th, complete the cycle of freedom for Americans in or Independence Day of ors or urbans, until all are free. None are free, is an often repeated maxim that can be used to highlight the significance of the end of the era of slavery of the United States. And whereas the National Juneteenth Observance Foundation is sponsoring the premier celebration concert worship service and campaign to commemorate America's Independence Day observance on the 19th of June, as one which completes the cycle of America's 18th century or Independence Movement, or initiated with the 4th of July, 1776, or Declaration of Independence, and to recognize the country's movement towards a one America, advanced by sincere dialogue of the realization of what Juneteenth historically means to all Americans, or promoting racial healing, reconciliation, restoration, and justice through the National Day of Reconciliation and healing from the legacy of slavery and the National Juneteenth Black Holocaust Memorial Service. Now therefore, people claim that the Board of Commissioners of the township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, hereby adopts this proclamation in support of the National Juneteenth Holiday Campaign and encourages participation of our members, families, and communities in the annual Washington Juneteenth, the National Day of Observance on the National Mall, Lincoln Memorial, the U.S. Capitol during the week of June 19 in Washington, D.C., proclaim this 14th day of June, township of Haverford, to Terry Hart, captain of the board.
Thank you. And can Rich say a few words?
I promise I'll be brief.
Joe, go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Rich Bly. I'm the chairperson of the JACE. The JACE stands for the Juneteenth Artistic Collaborative Experience. Since 2016, I've been going around to various townships, boroughs, municipalities, and speaking about this American holiday. Juneteenth is 159 years old. It is one of the longest celebrations that's done in the state of Texas, primarily in Galveston. It is in Minneapolis, Minnesota, is in Guam. It is in several countries. I've had the pleasure of getting the proclamation signed in Upper Darby Township, influencing Lansdowne to sign the proclamation, Collingdale, and now Haverford Township. I want to thank each and every one of you for having that fighting American spirit that we can bring together by the mutual history that we have through the service of the Civil War. Each and every one of our families were involved in this conflict, and somehow and some way, we need to get back to the commonality of being Americans and stop letting people rip us apart. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. We were also going to have some proclamation for Eagle Scouts. We put that back to next month when they can attend. The next item on the agenda is the Bureau of Fire update. Commissioner Wexler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Haverford Township Bureau of Fire responded to 85 incidents in the month of May of 2021. Membership response total for members responding to calls was 967 members. Weekly combined training was 828 hours. Two significant incidents for the month. On May 4th, the 300 block of Westchester Pike and Lanark Commercial Building Fire, a vehicle fire started inside, started to spread the structure, but was held. No injuries reported that day. On May 11th, the 1600 block of Ashton Road and Manoa Basement Fire, crews were able to contain the fire to the basement with significant smoke and water damage to the house. No injuries to firefighters or residents occurred during the incident. Four members of the Bureau of Fire were awarded Hometown Hero Scholarships last week by the Mainline Chamber of Commerce. Every year, the organization supports the volunteer fire service in our community. All five fire companies also participate in the annual Haverford Township Memorial Day Service here at the Township Building. Also, 14 members of the Bureau of Fire completed ropes and rigging class held in our township. Manoa Fire Company was awarded the Higgins and Langley Memorial Special Commendation Award for their team development and program. This award is an international award that's presented in South Bend, Indiana, at the annual International Association of Water Rescue Professional Symposium. And lastly, the Bonnetire Fire Company participated in the annual Fall and Firefighter and EMS Memorial Committee Softball Tournament last week. That was for that month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for the fire department's efforts.
Mr. President, just one thing about Manoa Fire Company. They also got the Swift Water Type 2A from the state of Pennsylvania. It's the only volunteer fire company in the county to get that certification.
Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is the Township Auditor Update. Mr. Anderson?
It's been well. It's good to be back, you know. It actually feels good to be in a suit and not just a suit above the waist. It's supposed to be... Yeah, thanks for that. All right, and then I've reviewed the expenses and awards for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, Mr. Berman, Township Manager Update.
Thank you. A last-minute notice. We're working with the county on a pop-up COVID vaccine station. They'd like to do it here at the township parking lot behind the Wawa on Monday from 9:00 to 11:30. So we're working on the logistics for that, but I think it's going to happen. All right. Want to talk a little bit about the roadwork that's been going on in town and all around town. It seems like every road in Haverford and beyond is constantly being worked on by either PICO or Aqua or somebody else. And so we did, as you know, award the road program a month or two ago, and they're going to start Thursday, and they're going to start up in the fifth ward. And I'm going to circulate this presentation to the commissioners, and we'll publish it on the website so that everybody can be aware of where we are throughout the project. We'll start in the fifth ward, and then they'll move on to the sixth ward, and coming further down into the eighth ward, then they'll move over to the seventh ward, and then up towards the second ward, and the ninth ward, and the first ward, and we'll finish up in the fourth ward, and the third ward, sorry. We're never coming to the third ward.
If you can keep people out.
So that's the tentative schedule. We'll get some more details for you as the project rolls along. But there's so many other projects going on in town, and I've just listed some of them on the screen where you can see that PICO and Aqua have been all over town with utility projects, and they're going to continue that. And I see that for the foreseeable future. One of the larger projects is this natural gas reliability project. That's a PICO project. And in Haverford, it's all on state roads. So we really don't have any jurisdiction to stop them from doing those projects. We did our best to work with PICO to try and get the projects off of the state roads to keep traffic moving. But there's one pinch point, and that's on Darby Road between Sproul Road and College Avenue. And so they're going to shut that down 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There'll be no traffic whatsoever, no emergency vehicles, and we won't be able to get through there for portions of the project. They're going to make room for emergency vehicles to the best of their ability, but Chief Ayala and the fire department and the EMS have all been advised and make arrangements as necessary to accommodate this work. So that's going to begin sometime in the next two to three weeks. PICO is hoping to work 10-hour days. They want to work Saturdays. They want to get in and out of here as quickly as possible. But the Darby Road project will not be complete until August or early September at best. In addition, PennDOT has issued a permit to PICO for Cooper Town and Landover Roads. This is daytime closures. So there will be access for residents and for emergency vehicles and for trash collection, the post office, and all those necessary services that need to be delivered to that area. This portion of the project is going to take much longer, and it will not be complete most likely until early spring of 2022. The detour for both projects is the same. It'll be Darby Road, Darby Road will be closed, and it'll be College Avenue to Haverford, to Bryn Mawr Avenue, to Sproul Road, and back to Darby Road. And so we did our best to try and work with PICO to make sure that this couldn't happen or wouldn't happen. But unfortunately, we were unsuccessful. And because all of these projects are on state roads, we really have no jurisdiction to stop them. And so this is what we're facing, starting in the next two to three weeks. And that's my report for this evening. John, I don't know if you have anything to offer on the emergency vehicle access?
No difficulties that we all face with it. Darby Road is going to be probably the biggest issue for emergency services and traffic and town services. And we've contacted our neighboring town just for emergency services to have a triple response up in that area because of difficulty of us going all the way around. So any issues that the fire chief would hear, if it's working fire, he'll immediately ask for a second dispatch from the police. If they're going up on a hot pole, they'll call a rad for more poles and more sort of come in. So we don't have a lot of service up there, luckily. So hopefully, and I think we'll be okay. But you know the complaints we have with the night work, so I think the day work probably is a little bit better. Not by much.
Thank you. I think it's going to be a tough summer. Item number eight, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. D'Amelio.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 10, 2021.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. Mr. Berman, would you take the roll?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Item number nine, approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Holmes. Sorry.
President, I move we approve warrant number six of 2021 totaling $4,25,988.64, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for May 13, 2021, in the amount of $635,137.71. General and sewer fund payroll for May 27, 2021, in the amount of $959,698.16. General Fund dispersments, number six of 2021, in the amount of $1,325,934.31. Sewer Fund dispersments, number six of 2021, in the amount of $509,588.34. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment, number six of 2021, in the amount of $29,572.58. Capital Projects Fund dispersment, number six of 2021, in the amount of $553,667.67. And a credit card statement ending May 27, 2021, in the amount of $12,389.87.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments?
Mr. President, these have been reviewed by our auditor. Any questions he's raised to our finance director have been answered to his satisfaction. I recommend we approve the warrant.
Mr. Berman, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes. Item number 10, settlement and stipulation of counsel.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, if I may ask our solicitor for a quick ad hoc opinion right now. If the passage is any prologue, we are going to approve these settlements and stipulations. So my request, Mr. Solicitor, is can I read the details of all six settlements and then just ask for one vote to approve the settlements and authorize counsel and officers of the board to execute the necessary documents?
Yeah, I think I think you could do that, especially with the way we have it set up. They're all under item number.
Terrific. Thank you. So I move we approve the following settlements and stipulations of counsel in the matters of owner-initiated property tax assessment appeals for six particular properties. First, 633 Dayton Road, DC Folio number 22-05-00279-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2021-002156. Property located at 717 Beachwood Drive, DC Folio 22-06-00177-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number 2020-00840. Property located at 20 East Park Road, DC Folio number 22-02-00870-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-00926. Property located at 217 Valley Ridge Road, DC Folio number 22-04-00696-53, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number, case number 2020-008796. Property located at 401 Pilgrim Lane, DC Folio number 22-09-02002-00, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008770. Property located at 229 Valley Ridge Road, DC Folio number 22-04-00696-59, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008361. And property located at 621 Ellis Road, DC Folio number 22-01-00381-02, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, case number 2020-008120. And I ask the board to approve these settlements and stipulations and authorize counsel and the proper officers of our board to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
Second by Commissioner D'Amelio. Any comments?
As you know, Mr. President, these are tax appeals. The township typically lets the school district take the laboring oar. In these cases, as they have much more money at stake, they've approved the same settlements, and I recommend we do the same.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Item number 11, ordinance number P92021, dedication of Jack's Way, second reading.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P92021, accepting the dedication of a certain street identified as Jack's Way, Haverford, Pennsylvania, as public land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holmes. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Item number 12, ordinance number P102021, a zoning map change, 833 Buck Lane's first reading. This was a subject of public hearing last week.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. McCabe.
Make a motion to adopt first reading of ordinance number P10-2021, revising its zoning map by reclassifying the zoning of the property located at 833 Buck Lane, Haverford, PA, known as Delaware County Folio number 22-05-00138-00, and Delaware County Tax Map number 22-03-297, from INS Institutional District to R1A Low Density Residential.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Aliva. Any comments? Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Item number 13, resolution number 22272021, the approval of the CDBG and the CDBG COVID allocations.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
President, I move we adopt resolution number 2227 of 2021, approving the 47th year of CDBG Program Action Plan and the CDBG COVID funding.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion, comments?
Well, it's just worth noting, this resolution, attachment aid to our resolution contains the allocation and including the particular allocation relating to COVID funding. And as anybody who tuned into last week's meeting or was here saw a really informative and quite compelling presentation from Suri Services, who are the beneficiaries of some of the COVID allocation in this resolution. So just wanted to make people aware of that, that presentation was for a purpose and was... was quite compelling, and they will be getting $111,000 of this funding.
Mr. Berman, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 14, the AFFF Fire Foam Litigation.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Demilio. I'd like to make a motion to approve Legal Services' agreement to engage Barron and Bud PC Dilworth Paxton LLP and Costage Summit Parzola and Taylor LLC as counsel to pursue damages against the manufacturers and suppliers of firefighting foam and other product.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Wexler. Discussion, comment?
Just that this is at the fire training ground, it's in the first ward, and we're pursuing this as per the Delaware County District Attorney's Office.
And the goal is to get it cleaned up?
The goal is to get it cleaned up, and we anticipate that that will occur with no problems.
And Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, when one of us recuses ourselves from a vote, it is incumbent upon us to explain why. While I am no longer associated with the law firm of Dilworth Paxton, I was there long enough that in order to avoid any appearance of any impropriety or anything associated with the township's retention of Dilworth Paxton as one of the law firms involved in here, I recused myself from this vote as well as from any discussion about this engagement.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 15, purchase Paxton Rec Play Equipment for Richland Park.
President.
Yes, Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of play equipment for Richland Park under Costa Air's contract for recreation, from Recreation Resource, Kennet Square, PA, in the amount of $42,719.
Second.
Seconded, by Commissioner Wex. Any comment?
I'd like to thank the board for this. This is, Richland Park has been in great need of upgrading for its function primarily as a tot lot and small children lot in that part of the township, so I appreciate your support in this.
Mr. Berman, could please call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Second item is for Lynnwood Field.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the installation of 420 lineal feet of four-foot wide asphalt at Lynnwood Field from Premier Concrete Incorporated in the amount of $10,836, submitting the lowest responsible quote. Oh, this path will be replacing the existing path.
Second.
Seconded, by Commissioner Quinn. Any comments? Mr. Berman, please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. McCabe.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes. Item number 17 is the continuation of the Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Are there any residents who wish to speak at this time?
I don't have anything prepared. My name's Bob Dell. I live at 5057 Brittany Lane. And first of all, I want to thank Chief Iola and Havert Township Police Department for the way they handled the pandemic. I think they deserve a big hand, but they dealt with a lot of tension, and they didn't exasperate it. And that's, thank you, sir, especially in the face of the war that we had people who are calling your thin blue line flag a racist flag and trying to get it taken down. And he sits right there, so I thank you very much. I appreciate that. My second thing, you guys sat up here and composed a letter demanding the resignation of the President of the United States. You're nine guys on a township board. You didn't talk to the people, you didn't get anything from people. Your job is to clear the streets, take care of your public works, take care of your police, take care of the streets, clean the things, take care of our money, and help business and get out of the way. Where we've put ourselves into a place where we're demanding the President of the United States to resign is beyond me, and it's power hungry, and it's not what this township needs. And the last thing I want to ask is, a year and a half or two years ago, we put a young man out of the fire service because he had associated with somebody a year before. I want to know what the list is of organizations that will get people precluded from volunteering or serving in the township. Where is that list, and how can people expect to follow it when it's not printed? You're changing goalposts all over the place, guys, and this township's had enough, enough. You're not United States Senators. You have Havert Township. This is where we work. This is what we're supposed to take care of. And what you did was wrong. There was a lot of people probably felt like it, and there was a lot of people that probably didn't feel like what you did was right. And you didn't have the right to speak for the township in that manner. It was wrong. And I hope you get back to taking care of our township, taking care of our cops, taking care of our public works, taking care of the streets, and getting businesses back up and running again. Let's worry about our priorities. Thank you.
Are there any other resident? I have a number of letters I'm going to read for residents who could not attend tonight. First one is from William Donahue, 109 North Bellfield Avenue, Havertown. Dear Havertown Commissioners, I'm very sorry to hear that Mr. Mike, the beloved crossing guard at Steel Road and Furlong Avenue, was fired from his position. Mr. Mike exudes the community spirit that makes Havertown Township such a nice place to live. He is always ready with a smile and a Mickey Mouse gloves thumbs up. I do not know the particulars of his removal, but if reinstatement is not a possibility, Mr. Mike deserves a better send-off than what has been afforded to him. Thank you, Mr. Mike, for making our mornings and afternoons that much brighter and for keeping us all safe. The second letter is from Janet Steiner, 1421 Kingsley Road. Gentlemen, I presented my concerns regarding domestic cats running at large to the board via a letter read at the September 14, 2020, board meeting. Ordinance Chair Siegel indicated in the December 2020 that he had reviewed our ordinance and provided the board president and township manager with potential changes. During the May 4, 2021, work session, the Health Advisory Board made their recommendations, suggestions for clearer language to the commissioners. I hope, along with other residents, to see the amendment to the current ordinance in the near future. If and when that occurs, may I suggest publication via the township website, newsletter, and social media outlets, in addition to notices sent to the veterinary practices located within the township, so that the cat owners are not caught unaware. Final letter is from Tony Morinelli, Hartford Hall, Mill Road. Gentlemen, this Board of Commissioners has much to consider by its decision to demolish our heritage in the Brookline School. You will put $12 million into a building that is little more than a tomb with little but minimal access. Yet, you will demolish a building constructed from the very bones of this township, literal and figurative. As a child, the Brookline Library was my second home. The elegant wood panel building with its children's alcove introduced me to hours of exploration. Then there was the high gallery room, which I was allowed to use only when I was about 12. The space was high and brightly lit. The oak panel shelves inspired a lifetime of literary and historic inquiry that culminated in most successful academic career. In the '70s, that elegant building was despoiled in the name of modernism. The oak was stripped away, the great staircase demolished, the gallery desecrated. The result of that desecration to this day is so shameful that the library website does not feature that, feature its true appearance, but substitutes a feeble architectural supposition. The current library interior is little more than a dark tomb with no elegance or atmosphere reflective of reading or thoughtful investigation. I would suggest that none of you know the original library. I would ask how many of you sitting here in the judgment of our history recall those oak-paneled walls with the scent of books or have experienced their influence? And I would question how many of you frequent the current site on a regular basis. Our architecture reflects our sociological place in human history. The architecture of the current structure illustrates a society for whom reading and books is a dark, dismal, drop ceiling of fluorescent lighting. Those on the current Board of Commissioners reflect the influx of those fleeing the decline of their former townships. Yet, what is not realized is that the values and mindsets that brought about the demise of the former neighborhoods is now being carried forward to Havertown Township. For this Board, there is no generational continuity. There is neither knowledge nor interest in our history. I have grown up in my grandmother's house like my neighbors in those days. My family has been here for near 100 years. How long have any members of the Board lived here? I will mention my grandmother's house, the house where I grew up, as an example. The house was such a perfect example of American colonial home that it was featured in television commercials. Today, the house has been stripped of its delicate and historic refinements. The house has been modernized with solar panels on its front roof. It has not been painted or cared for in years. The state of my grandmother's house is not unlike what has been done to the library and what this body will continue to do with your $25 million of pointless modernization. The demolition of the Brookline School likewise akin to the desecration of a once beautiful structure. All environmental, historic, and government encouragement for repurposing of buildings has been ignored. All requests for Suri, childcare, and other community groups has been ignored. You will tear down the stones that were quarried from our own ground, the stones that built Brookline. You will demolish the stones of a building of historic design. You will demolish a building that stood as an educational foundation of the community. Tony Morinelli. Just briefly to respond, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Mike, the crossing guard is a personnel issue. It's not something that we could discuss here. Ms. Steiner, as at this point, no one has come forward with a revised cat ordinance. If they do, we certainly will publicize it and discuss it at these meetings. It will be voted on here. And in response to Mr. Morinelli, just a couple of items. Nearly half of our Board has lived their whole life in Havert. They were born here and have lived here ever since. Of the rest of the members of the Board, I think I am maybe one of the newest, and I've lived here over 30 years, so we're not newcomers. The library is the most popular library in Havert, in Delaware County, so certainly people are continuing to use it. I understand many people are upset about the Brookline School coming down. I think we explored every, everything that we could possibly do. It's just the funding was not there. So unfortunately, and not everybody feels that the school should continue, but for those that do, I think we did our due diligence there, and that will be something that will happen later in the summer. Make sure if any other commissioners have any comments. If not, we'll move on to new business. New business. And number 19, other business. Commissioner Demilio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to make the first word, or any resident throughout the township aware that the Westgate Hills Civic Association will be hosting a Westgate Hills Movie Night in the Park on this Friday, and it will be Raiders of the Lost Ark. I don't know the time, they didn't give the time, but I would suggest you look at their website. Westgate Hills Civic Association does have a website. You could check that out. And as far as the road program is concerned, the township manager will send us those slides, and I will send out to my constituents what streets will be repaved coming up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aliva.
Yeah, I'd like to thank this Board as well as the Park Board for the renaming of the Andy Lewis Community Park. I know his family as well, and a lot of his constituents are very happy about that.
Thank you. Commissioner McCosky.
Yeah, we're all back here tonight, and that's certainly very happy about it. I want to give a shout out to one of our township's programs. The Recreation Department runs a 5K series in May, June, and July, the last Wednesday of every month. It's in Havert Trails. You know, in the past, we've been talking about trying to get more and more people to come, and that certainly is the goal moving forward, but the fact that this event occurred last month was a success in and of itself, and the weather gods tried to prevent it for a little bit, but the group waited it out 10 minutes, and they ran, and everybody was happy and smiling and running free through the woods like small children. So, it was a moment of happiness after a very long year, so I want to commend everybody at the Recreation Department who took part in that, organized it. It's a lot of work. Encourage anybody who is interested to come out in June and July and run through the woods as if you were five years old, so. And then I also just want to thank School Ends This Week and Havert Township at a lot of our public and private schools, and I just want to thank all the teachers in the township, those that work in the township, and those who are residents of the township. It was, you know, a very challenging year for a lot of different, a lot of different reasons. But I think one thing that almost all the parents I know that I've spoken to and myself personally, you know, we want to thank the teachers and the staff at the schools for everything they did to try to make it as normal as possible for the kids. Was it always successful? Probably not, but it was really an impossible situation, and they really did a great job to keep the spirits up of themselves and of the kids, so just want to give them a shout out at the end of the school year, and hopefully everyone has a great summer. Thank you.
Mr. McCabe.
Thank you. Would just like to echo Commissioner Aliva regarding the renaming of the park. Having the opportunity now to be the Commissioner for the 5th Ward, I see it every day, the number of folks who just really cared about Andy and the way Andy cared about them, and I think it's an incredible tribute to an incredible man, so I also want to thank the Commissioners for doing so. As it relates to the traffic, the 5th Ward's getting hit pretty hard, I think, pretty early on with County Law, with Cooper Town Road and Landover as well as Darby, so I appreciate the communication. We'll try to get that as quickly as we can to everyone, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. ..........................................................................................................................................................................................
So as far as Donald Trump goes, I don't do things because public opinion says I should. I got elected to exercise my judgment up here, and as a leader, we have a duty to address anything, whether it's local or whether it's nationwide, that threatens our society. It's my job. As long as I have this job, I will do that. I will do it proudly, and public sentiment at the time ran about 20 to 1 in favor of this Board, including all nine members of this Board who voted unanimously and really without much debate, without much concern. So I, I, you got your chance to speak, Mr. Dell. Now it's my chance to speak. I get to speak last. That's, that's how this works. So as far as naming the park goes, I, it was a pleasure to serve with Andy the first time. It was a pleasure again to serve with him again on this Board. I considered Andy a dear friend, and his loss is a brutal loss to this township, to his family, to all of us who are his friends and, and who were his constituents, and it is, it will be a wonderful legacy for him and for his memory that we will enjoy that park, and generations of Havertonians will enjoy that park, and they'll see his name, and if they didn't know him, somebody else will, and they will explain who he was and how important he was to the people in this township, and that's really the greatest honor that I think we could give to Andy. So on that note, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I respectfully just make a comment because the Thin Blue Line flag came up? I just want to clarify that the Thin, Thin Blue Line flag, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, it represents the death of any police officer, no matter what color or nationality in this country. That's what it stands for. I don't want to debate it, I'm just telling you what it stands for.
Commissioner Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll also echo my support for renaming the park. I had the pleasure of serving on the Ad-Hoc Committee prior to becoming a Commissioner on Haverford Reserve, where, at Haverford State Hospital at that time with Jan Marie, and Andy was instrumental in working that there, so he's truly deserving of that award and recognition, and I fully concur with that. On a more, on a brighter note, I'm happy to announce that the Hilltop Civic Association will in fact sponsor its traditional July 4 celebration, bicycle march and contests and field events, and march from Bonner Fire Company to Steel Field on the 4th of July. So the tradition continues. We didn't get to do it last year, but we're doing it this year. And the last thing, I'm just happy to report over my right shoulder, to hear the screams and the cheers going on out there at the baseball field, that we are getting back to somewhat normal, and it's a great thing to hear, even if we didn't get a parking spot out there. That makes up, that makes up for it. That makes up for walking a block to this meeting. It's, it's good to hear those kids out there and see the families out there having a great time, so thank you very much.
I thought they were screaming because you walked in, Bill. I thought they were screaming because you walked in.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn.
Well, thank you to the Board for allowing me to present that Juneteenth proclamation to Rich Play and the Juneteenth group, and, and also if you're driving down Brookline or Centrela's is back, back open, and I know everybody is thrilled in this town that that's there. And also, the Grange was awarded the Grange, or a prepar, prepar, perpetuation for the Grange lower springhouse roof rest, or restoration, so there were, or for historical, or preserv- or preservation in Delaware County, so, so congrats to the Grange, and I was proud to vote for that, for the naming of the park. And also, one more thing, I have lived in this town for as long as I know, that, this is the only town I know, so that answers Tony's question there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Just finally, Commissioner Quinn and I got to participate in two events out at the Reserve, which will soon be Andy Lewis Park. One, the open, the official opening of the new turf field, which looks wonderful. It's lasted a little longer than we expected. The new turf is even better than the old turf. And also, the, the official opening of disc golf and, sure. Disc golf, Kevin, it's another opportunity not to run through the woods, but to throw discs through the woods, so if you should, if you have an opportunity, it's a great Really, anybody can participate. It's really, it's great. You get to walk all through the Reserve. I just tried out. We, we had a great time.
Dave and Jerry, like obviously if you saw the video I have to work on on my throat, so, so, so these guys are pros, but I'm not, so.
Thank you for that. And if there's no, nothing further, I have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. adjourn.